We make, I mean, it helps to make one motion, but we discuss.
So let's start with December thirteenth. Any questions or comments about that? January tenth?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was the January tenth meeting and there was one change in on the page that I think it's the last page that had the committee assignments. So one of them had Grover on it. So we're changing that to Kelly because that's what was decided at the meeting.
Oh, for the, oh, yes.
Yeah.
All right. And no questions or comments on that? How about the January twenty fourth? Comments or questions on this? Okay. All right. Seeing none from the council. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry. You've got the gestures now, so. So let me open to public comments. Are there any public comments with regard to the minutes from either of those three meetings? All right. I've seen other comments or fractions on those.
I'm going to look at the minutes of all three months. Second.
All right. All those in paper?
All right.
Hi. Okay. All right. So we're moving right along. Now we are at staff report, or excuse me, council reports. This is our video assignment. So let me go, I guess, from left to right. So Jack West, do you have anything to do with everybody?
And I'll, I'm going to start by apologizing to everybody. We had what looked like a great rail committee meeting coming up last week. And unfortunately, I got too sick to head the meeting. And so we decided to back out of it. Just seeing that we're doing some nice things and we will be meeting as soon as I come up with a new date and get back to all the things we're working on. I have a short HIC report. We've, just so you know, if you've noticed by going by the Gentle area turn on, excuse me, the work on the Arika corridor. All right. You noticed trees have been cut down. So the first step in the overpass and from between Eureka and Arcata is being done and it will be continuing in spring. We're going to begin to actually see the word that to create the overpass and the trail that goes from Breakout to Eureka and the overpass to Indianola. So that is all in the works and you're beginning to see the actual work being done. And it's still hopefully be done in two thousand twenty-three possibly. And downtown Eureka is on a big move between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-five. We'll see a lot of activity. The one thing that's going to take a long time is the part of your, anything from Indianola to Eureka right now where the trail is going to go in. They are going to be replacing the Slough Bridge and both those bridges that go over to Eureka. It's about a hundred and thirty million dollar project. So they haven't got the funding yet. So that is hopefully going to be done in two thousand twenty-nine or two thousand thirty. But there's lots of changes through the Broadway area to read this. So keep your eyes open and we've got a HIC to find out more information here, Dr. She.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Humboldt Transit Authority continues to make great strides towards bringing a fully electric and/or hydrogen bus fleet to the county. We're actually a leader in the state in a lot of the efforts, including developing, right now, this is ironic, right? We have to pay a ton of money in diesel to ship hydrogen fuel to the county. Because the nearest production site for, for hydrogen is in Sacramento. So we're working on a, on a hydrogen production site in the county. And so we're just, we're making great strides in bringing all of this to, to the county. So that's really encouraging. My meeting with REDAC, the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation, didn't, we just did some sort of in-house kind of business this month. So nothing related to report out. And then I can share that I am still working on getting connected to the Arcata Ambassador Program. And so I will give an update as soon as my schedule and the city manager's schedule for Arcata can coincide. So please keep, keep looking for those updates.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead? I have nothing to report except that the committee that you just mentioned that Cheryl is going to be your second.
Good. Thank you.
All right. I just have a couple of quick ones. I attended the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting on the ninth of February. So this, you know, was made to center line, the new state law about composting and organic extraction. And so they covered off on regional organic extraction and processing primarily. They shared a new video that they have, if anyone's interested in Humboldt Waste Management Authority. They kind of showed the whole history and everything. But the most important thing, I think, the most alien thing for Trinidad is the estimated timeframe for this summer to be able to for them to have a collection facility in place so that you can either drop off organic waste or they will have a pickup service. But the pickup service is going to be Humboldt Sanitation and Recycling. And I called them today. They don't have a timeframe just yet. So even though Humboldt Waste Management Authority should have the collections that are available in the summer, there may be a bit of a lag before Humboldt Sanitation has the pickup service. So meanwhile, keep composting on your own if you can. And then the other thing was the Water Advisory Committee. We had that last week. The WAC or Water Advisory Committee, we thanked Eli and Phil. We all took a tour of the water plant. The city councillors and the planning commissioners all toured the water plant. And so that was really useful. But we spent a bit of time on was talking about some things that are in the budget today, about the plant management through the contractor Coleman Engineering. We also reviewed the agreement with Pacific Watershed Associates and some of the work they're doing to look for raw water storage for the city. We, let's see, we also discussed whether to continue to have the Water Advisory Committee outside of the city council. And it was unanimous that we should continue the work because we can go deep on water topics. And some of those future topics will be water conservation or water sourcing, like rainwater catchment and also the quality of the city water. So, so that was, you mentioned, and then I think the only other thing is that we had three of the councillors attended ethics training last week. So that was a good refresh for us that we do every two weeks. That's it.
And we should talk a lot about it.
Yes.
So Cheryl and I, I know it's not kind of a nice intro. We should talk.
Yes, please.
I forget there's people in the room. So Cheryl and I and our city planner, Trevor, and our city manager, Eli, met with the rancheria in our government-to-government efforts, really resuming meetings that we held pre-pandemic. We, we just got out of the sequence of, of meeting with folks. So it was mostly just sharing updates about efforts that they're doing with their stormwater or let's see, the first one, oh, the, there's a proposed that will come to the council for, for more discussion, but a proposed land swap of a tiny little parcel from the rancher city to the rancheria on one side of the harbor and then the opposite transfer or another transfer in the opposite direction, both benefiting the city and the rancheria. Instead of easements, it'll be a small property transfer. So equal amounts of property. So we just discussed activities that are going on in each of our areas. They had a new, a couple of new councillors. We had a couple of new councillors. So it's just nice to, to bring those discussions back. I don't know if I encapsulated it all.
Yeah, I think the only other thing we talked about was some continued desire on the part of the rancheria to, to source water for their new product. And, you know, continued discussion with Humboldt Municipal Water District, but also the city of Trinidad. So more to come on that.
I thought one more thing I had.
Yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to let you all know, thank you for all of you that missed the last meeting. You didn't have one. It was a Valentine mall and it was a very successful night and just wanted it was very nice that we could get out of that city house and use this for a fundraiser and by the way, the rancheria was, Jackie was there and he made a great presentation. So it was a really nice event. So if you're going to try, you'll continue to have us come in and have a good time with them in the town hall, these kinds of activities for the community.
Did you guys have heat? Did you have heat?
Yeah, well, we had heat for that.
Just checking. Yeah, just checking.
So, all right, Saffron Point. So you have a minute.
Yeah, I'll turn it over for law enforcement to Lieutenant Josh Paul, who's on the Zoom call.
Hey, good evening. You guys hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
All right, perfect. So I know it's the last day of February. I don't have the February stats, but I'm looking at January's, excuse me. So overall for January, had two hundred and two calls for service in the city in greater Trinidad area. Out of that, there was thirteen reports taken, five arrests were made, four felony investigations and four misdemeanor investigations. There was three assaults with one of those being related to domestic violence, one burglary, one vandalism, one general theft, eight general disturbances, couple of trespass slash prowler suspicious person calls and then one stolen vehicle or recovery out of that. As far as the other general calls, we had five alarms, six business checks or patrol checks conducted by deputies in general. Suspicious persons were three calls or vehicles. One shots heard or possible fireworks and then four traffic stop vehicle investigations with a total of a hundred and sixty-five other miscellaneous calls that don't fall into those, those categories.
So if there's any questions or comments from the council and then also the public and just especially note, because we do have some people in the public that we normally don't have. The report covers the greater Trinidad area. So a large part of the activity is actually in the county area beyond the city.
So I have a question, but I don't know if Josh will answer to this, but is, I noticed that the climate heat map is different from the report that we get from you. Isn't, it seems like there are less things on the climate map. Do you have any idea why there's a disparity in that data or is it?
I'm sorry, the, I'm on my, I'm on my laptop and the volume's not as, as high as I'd like it to, to, to which, which were you referring to?
There's a Humboldt County Sheriff's Department heat map and you can go there and see all the report.
Through the citizen, citizen rims?
Yeah. Do you know?
Yeah, so I'm going to guess if you're looking at the numbers look less than that.
Yes.
Yes, because that usually I think, and I'm, I'm not super tech savvy with that whole, that whole system of that. But I know that's a limited number of days that does it. So these are stats for the entire month of January. Whereas if you were to pop on the, that map for today, I think that only basically looks at, depending on the date range you set up to the last week or so.
Other questions? Are we done with, we're done with councillors? Any other questions, councillors? Okay, open to the public comments, please. I, Anita first and then Patty. Sorry, Patty, she was on her way. Hello again.
I just wanted to thank you for summarizing the details of the RCT.
Of course.
Thank you for, Patty, a question. I wondered if your report of the two hundred and two calls for the vandalism officer had anything to do with the breaking of the windows at the library and the museum and the post office? And I've worked these way out. Was that in the report? And do you know anything about that?
So the, the stats I'm looking at, which is the, the same form that's basically sent to the city by the staff at the, at the McKinneyville Station, doesn't specify what any of these specific incidences are. If that was the case in January and there was a bunch of windows broken, multiple businesses, especially in the same, you know, discovered at the same time or occurring at the same time, and it was probably taken under one report. So if that occurred in January and that was the, what was called a report, that's probably what that one vandalism is referring to.
It was separate where it actually last week.
Okay. So no, that one wouldn't be in here because again, I know today's the, the last day of the month. We didn't have the, she didn't have these stats compiled yet for February. So this is all January's stats. I don't know what day that's news to me as far as all those, those, that being broken. Definitely look into it when I'm back in the office. But yeah, this is the first that I personally have, have heard of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Patty. That's a good question. I saw that on, mentioned on that story. So. All right. Other questions or comments? All right. I don't see any others. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lieutenant Paul. So as far as the city managers' report, number one, the website. I signed the contract last week. It was sent to Civic Plus. They will be, be looking on our website update and revision and they, and posting. And it should be available sometime in the spring is what we're hoping for. And then the stormwater project has a monitoring well that'll happen in the harbor, March sixth, beginning in the morning and hopefully ending close to noon will be the drilling or the monitoring well. It will be done through an auger drill, which will basically have a certain measure of blows that can be heard in the near vicinity. We're notifying all residents west of Trinity Street. So basically anything heading down from Trinity towards the harbor the business, any businesses and residents will be notified to anticipate that sound. I know if I live in that area, I might just find something else to do and go somewhere. Yeah. Water plant with the turbidity, of course, that's always a challenge. And then the power outage is creates another challenge because the, I mean, the water plant rather has to be reset every time that the power goes out. And we applied for Measure C funding. So I'll update you as that moves along. We're requesting money for the community ambassador program and for Pacific Coast Security. And then if we can get additional on-the-ground deputies from the sheriff, then we could possibly use that as part of the records. Project was completed for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And the TOT revenue for this past quarter was up even though compared to last year, even though it was at eight percent, that there was more activity happening this past year in two thousand twenty-two than in two thousand twenty-one. And then just a reminder for all STRs and our B and B, that April first, the new TOT rate will increase to twelve percent. And as far as the water loss, it actually went up again this year. I mean, this month, it keeps fluctuating. But it's at twenty point six five. So ideally, as long as we can keep it twenty percent and below, we're okay with that. And that's all I have. I'll entertain any comments or questions.
Eli, can I get a, or can we, and I know this is kind of off the cuff, but any updates on the rainwater catchment? You mentioned the stormwater project and how I was able to fund this rainwater catchment. Is there any update on how that's progressing over at the school?
Yeah, there, there's nothing really new at the moment. And then GHD is also working on plans for that. So that's the current stage.
All right, thanks.
I have a question. On the stormwater monitoring well, exactly what does that mean?
Well, the state requires through the water board, requires all the stormwater that runs off and it's going now into the harbor from the city. They want us to monitor the water there and, and determine certain things that are in the water that are coming from the stormwater in the city and going into the harbor. And they also want to monitor the groundwater in the harbor area to make sure that once the water reaches the ocean and the bay, it's not, you know, having certain pollutants.
All right. Any questions on the staff report from the public? Please, Ms. Thompson? For the city manager, can you hear me?
Yes.
So we don't, we don't know why the water loss increased by almost fifty percent from.
Yeah, well, and, and it decreased the last month by like quite a bit from twenty-four to ten. Ten was actually an anomaly, I think. Generally speaking, it, it runs between fifteen and twenty percent generally. So I gave, actually compared this report on that page. Do you have any other insight?
Because we just look at the trend for next month.
Yeah, we look at the overall loss at the, like an annual average. Yeah, that's where we end up with our twenty between fifteen and twenty percent water loss, which is a, let's just call it a, a good, an average number for our municipal system. But it's, we, we try, we've been trying to figure this out for so many years, whether it's the time that they start reading, if they read like, they finish like a day later. If they read the master meter first, by the time they get to the end of the route, people have already used water since we read the first master meter. So there's all kinds of different formulas that they've tried to take and we still haven't really narrowed it down yet. But we think that has a lot to do, sometimes it'll take them a day and a half to read and so much water is being passed through meters by the time they read that first master meter. So we have some answers. We just don't have, you know, the science.
Thank you for explaining it. And I would assume that it sounds like, from what Mayor Kelly said, that you're going to discuss the staffing for the because I didn't attend the Water Advisory Committee, you're going to discuss that in more detail, Coleman, staffing and what's going on right now with the water plant staffing running it. Are we going to discuss that later or?
Well, it, it's not on the agenda, but I can just comment a little bit. So, yeah. So COVID engineering, with Phil Goddard, will continue for the time being. We are chief plant operator. And then we do have one T three, John Genesco and one T two, Lyle Lowery. And they're, they're working at the plant. And then Phil comes in from Roseville twice a month to just oversee and so on. Yeah, but that's the current status right now. So we're, we're trying to possibly get other things going on, you know, in the near future to help determine who would be the chief plant operator.
The one at Coleman that exits.
So Coleman technically will always be like in the background, but hopefully we cut back to maybe around five thousand a month. But at the time of May, until we have someone who's actually the chief plant operator, they'll continue to do that function.
We can talk about the budget side of that when we get to the budget.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the last thing was, I'm just happy to hear that about the city's application for this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Where, at this point, we are opening up. So this is a good, a good intro to the items from before. So if this time members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda, individual comments limited to three minutes or less. Please direct your comments to the council as a whole, maintain decorum and avoid personal attacks on staff members or the council and other members of the public. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. So let me ask if there are any items from before. Any questions?
Very brief information, the coastal development permit to complete the Memorial Light House project in the harbor owned by the Ranch Rio was passed unanimously by the California Coastal Commission on February tenth. Update.
Thank you. Just an update. And I did come up in our meeting with the rancher yesterday and we said we were moving ahead. We think we're, we're going well. So. Are there any items from the floor? You on Zoom that wants to raise hand or? Okay. See anything? Just keeping honest. Did you see something? I don't. Okay. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. So maybe there are items that are considered routine with the council. Any questions or comments? So only consent agenda. Is there a move to? First, we'll go to public comments. Are there any public comments? We consent agenda? No, no, none?
I'll vote against the agenda, consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? All right. All right. So the council passes the consent agenda unanimously. And we are going to move on into the first item on tonight's agenda, which is a presentation from the Tobacco Free North Coast. And this will be regarding the tobacco retail license policy. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Tell them for having us tonight. We appreciate your time and we'll try to keep things brief. My name is Jay Wabry. I'm a project director with Tobacco Street North Coast. We're a regionally funded project covering Delmore, Campbell Lake and Mendocino counties funded by the California Department of Public Health. And our main goal is to assist cities and counties in adopting policies that prevent the whole, prevent and reduce the toll that commercial tobacco takes on our people and our communities. Tonight's presentation, you have a lot of information in your packet. I know you probably haven't had a chance to look all over yet, but please do take some time. Good bedtime reading. There's a lot of details in there and tonight's presentation will just highlight some of that information. In August of two thousand twenty-two, the Humboldt County Department of Public Health provided a presentation to the Board of Supervisors about tobacco retail licensing. Tobacco retail licensing or TRL is recommended by both the Centers for Disease Control Prevention and the California Department of Public Health as a public health best practice in reducing and preventing tobacco addiction. The board at that time unanimously voted to continue to proceed on looking at a TRL policy for county and incorporated. And they asked that all the other jurisdictions, jurisdictions of the county be brought along in that discussion. That's a good thing for a policy for protecting the public health. It also creates a level playing field for merchants throughout Humboldt County. So at that time, it was reported, the illegal sales rate in Humboldt County was fifty-four percent. Which is pretty darn high. Similar results in some of the other cities that we surveyed back in March of two thousand twenty-two. So since that time, you may recall that the state voters upheld a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco. You think that's a great thing. However, the state law provides no resources for local communities to enforce that law. Provides no additional funding or enforcement. So want to see that happen, which the voters approved by we're going to have to make that pass on ourselves. And TRL, tobacco retail licensing is a way to do that. So there's a lot of details in your packet. Some folks here tonight to highlight some more of this information. Caitlin Giddings, Caitlin Giddings is with the Humboldt County Department of Public Health. And their program with the county is one of only three other counties in California that are addressing tobacco product waste, one of the main forms of litter in our environment. Three changes in the retail environment, tobacco retail licensing is one of those. Then we have up here on Zoom, Amber Weir. Amber works for a project called NorCal for Health. They're really focused on long-term policies that create, that build a healthier community. TRL being one of those. She was instrumental in the, the TRL policy recently adopted by the Delmore County Board of Supervisors. So this is happening all over the state. Jay Macedo originally worked in Sonoma County. And Jay helped Sonoma County and other jurisdictions down there, helped them implement the TRL policy that they have. So he's got on the ground experience. He's also a consultant with several of the tribal tobacco prevention programs. So at that, I'll pass it on to Caitlin and thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Caitlin Giddings. I'm the project director for Tobacco Free Humboldt with Humboldt County Public Health. And today I'm just going to talk a little bit about the environmental aspect of all of this. So tobacco waste from cigarette butts, vape pens and the packaging trash that all of those come in. It impacts both the public's health and the environment negatively. Cigarette butts are actually the number one most littered item on California's beaches and in its waterways. I heard you guys talk about stormwater earlier. It's also the number one thing that the North Coast Stormwater Coalition talks to me about when I attend. So according to the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau, clean air and beaches are some of the top reasons that tourists are dis- So according to the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau, clean air and beaches are some of the top reasons that tourists are visiting states like Trinidad in. We found two hundred and thirty-three cigarette butts, um, on February fifteenth, when we visited here, uh, to do just a local pickup just in Trinidad city limits. Uh, and so that's, you know, kind of impactful for us, especially in the off season. On the bottom here, you'll see some of the cigarette filters, which I'll touch on. So these products, the butts, the vape pens, the trash from the packaging, these all leach not only nicotine. But also flavoring chemicals into the surrounding soil and the waterways, which is something we do not want. Uh, nicotine is actually classified as an acute hazardous waste by the EPA, which is kind of scary to hear, for me at least. As cigarette butts degrade, the filters disintegrate, but they do not disappear completely. They actually turn into little particles of plastic called microplastics, and those are less than five millimeters long. I picked out a few of them from our lovely pickup. Uh, you may have seen some of these just kind of, you know, on the street, near storm drains. Um, and they, they start to kind of blend in because they just get tramped down and then they're disintegrating into storm drains. Debris. So for the first time in twenty twenty-two, microplastics were actually found in human blood, human organs and human waste. Meaning that we're ingesting these at kind of a high rate at this point. These can lead to chronic illnesses and cancer-causing conditions, not only for humans, but for wildlife, so that's another reason that this is really important. To improve the environment and community health, a proven best practice is to reduce the availability of tobacco products. The option to pass a local tobacco retail license so that Trinidad could more easily enforce. The recently passed law prohibiting the sale of the most flavored tobacco products in California could have a myriad of positive effects. Including decreasing the amount of cigarette butts that we have washing into Trinidad's storm drains and the ocean. Local efforts are needed to protect our environment and community health from commercial tobacco product waste. By reducing the number of tobacco products sold and available, tobacco use and trash will decrease. Next we'll have Amber speaking on Zoom.
Thank you, thank you Caitlin, that was very informative. Um, first off, uh, my name's Amber Weir, I'm project director for NorCal for Health. And I'm, um, here, as Jay mentioned, uh, I'm up in, uh, Delmore County, actually. Uh, the weather was a little iffy on driving down tonight, so I apologize, normally I like to be there in person. Um, so hopefully tonight you'll be able to hear me and I'll stay connected, I've already gotten bugged off once, but we'll, we'll see. Um, my, uh, my work has really been around the youth and how the tobacco companies, uh, market to the youth. So thank you for sharing my, uh, my slide there or my flyers, so what? What we're really trying to address is the youth impacts, uh, we have an epidemic of youth, uh, vaping and, and becoming addicted to nicotine. And historically tobacco companies, uh, all know, you know, this is well researched and, uh. And used as the way that they do their marketing, they know that most smokers today started, uh, as a youth. So that they target our, our youth in our communities and they know that, uh, exposure to marketing more than doubles the odds. That kids will use tobacco and youth are more likely to actually be influenced by ads than by peer pressure. So, uh, youth are three times more sensitive to tobacco ads than adults, I think as we grow up, we kind of get blind. To the, to the tobacco being everywhere, I have a short story, uh, about a youth, this is before I started working in tobacco prevention. Uh, I was in a pharmacy and I had a youth with me and he started huffing and puffing in line. And I said, Colton, what's wrong? And he's like, I'm just, I don't, I don't get it, back there. It, we were at a pharmacy, I just picked up my daughter's medicine, they want to save us, and up here, they want to kill us, like, I don't understand which way. And I had no clue what he was talking about, and I looked forward and I was like, oh my gosh, you're right, there were cigarettes. Everywhere on the back wall, there were candies, bubble gum and magazines all right there, it, right next to the cigarettes. And it was all eye level for him, and he's looking at his surroundings and learning from what is around him more than what people are telling him to do. I think we have some experience in that in our own lives, we, we learn from our environments and what people are doing more than what people are saying. If that were the case about saying, maybe we wouldn't be drinking so much sugar and playing on our cell phones all the time. Because that's what parents are telling the kids that it's bad for, so they really look at their. Uh, looking at tobacco, so what communities are doing to combat that is adding plugins in tobacco retail licenses. That reduce that exposure and you can do that, um, simple plugins, I know you don't have a pharmacy here, but in future you may. So requiring that pharmacies don't, if you have a pharmacy that you don't sell tobacco, can be a plugin. Um, there's plugins on proximity to youth-friendly places, like not having ads and tobacco retailers within a thousand feet. Of some of these youth-friendly playgrounds, daycares, uh, schools. Um, and then there's caps on how many retailers per population do you need? And, and what they like to do is, is have, um, you know, one retailer per two thousand five hundred people is kind of the, the. The area we, we like to be in on that, and I think, I think you might have two and, and, um, I'm. It might be a little too many, but what is, but what they do is. Put a restriction on not allowing more to come in so that it doesn't keep that influence happening. And then with those retailers that are there and selling tobacco, uh, you can put a policy in place that doesn't allow it to be sold on the countertops. Or near candy chips and soda where kids are, or right by the door where people are coming and going and seeing it all. Uh, there's some storefront advertising that has been, uh, really adopted by a lot of communities as far as. Only allowing ten percent of the windows to be covered, and this is actually backed up as well by safety, uh, and. The crime-free kind of policies so that when police are doing their routes, they can see in and you can see out, and it's safer for. People in those convenience stores, so those are just some of the plugins that, uh, jurisdictions are considering when adopting a tobacco retail license. That I want to share with you tonight, and next we'll have Jay Macedo, who will talk about merchant education and the enforcement of a tobacco retail license.
Many California jurisdictions have passed and implemented these, the less local T R Ls. Uh, research has shown that T R L policies have an average annual reduction in used tobacco sales of twenty-six percent. With many communities seeing fifty to ninety percent reductions. Look, P R L fees are set high enough to support and sustain local administration and enforcement. The average T R L fee in California was three hundred and forty-four dollars per year. With four hundred and seventy-five dollars being the most common fee. Local T R L policies and, and, um, Amber had mentioned some of the different kinds of policy options that are in there. Um, that those provide many different options for each community to determine the best enforcement, uh, protocols, uh, for their community. As state-funded technical assistance providers or TA providers, our three agencies here tonight can provide, um. Uh, assistance with T R L policies, drafting, uh, fee setting, as well as procedures. Uh, many of these based on best practices of other California communities that have implemented them. We offer free compliance support to localities by educating retailers in the community about the T R L. And also about the, the new statewide flavor ban that was mentioned this evening. Our agencies can develop and purchase store T R L signs, educational materials and provide merchant trains. Perform store visits and surveys that assist with implementation such as licensed protocols. And applications and compliance checks as well. We can work with local law enforcement to conduct those local purchase, um, tobacco surveys, Jay had mentioned the rate was fifty-four percent here, Humboldt County, unincorporated. Um, so we could help, uh, run, help with running those, we could also, um, assist with recruiting young adults, uh, the deploy operations. And both of those types of, of strategies are to help us to evaluate the T R L policy goal. Which is to reduce illegal tobacco sales to those that are under twenty-one. Centerized local T R L policies across Humboldt County can help ensure regular education, compliance and enforcement with local, state and federal laws. These laws are designed to protect, uh, those under twenty-one from tobacco and also create a level playing field for the retailers in Humboldt County across all jurisdictions. We respectfully invite council to direct staff to work with our projects and develop this policy for further consideration by the council. And more details on the T A's available in those, those nice packets that you have, and our contact information is in there as well. Uh, we look forward to meeting, um, staff and, and with council for T R, TA consultation around, uh, tobacco policy. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you everyone. That was really good presentation and you're doing wonderful work and we appreciate you, uh, picking up our, our litter, I'm embarrassed that we have so many cigarette butts, but. Well, I'll be keeping an eye on those now, um, I just wanted to mention that, um, before I opened the questions, I stopped by Murphy's and Chevron because I got curious. Murphy's only sells cigarettes, they don't sell vape pens at all or vape supplies, in case folks didn't know. The cigarettes are kind of by the front door, but they're, they're a bit off to the side. The Chevron sells, uh, probably sells two kinds of vapes that they pointed out to me, uh, but they don't sell any flavor. Uh, they said that's by state law, so I was glad to hear that they're adhering to that. Um, I didn't see a real obvious display of cigarettes, but the vapes were right kind of by the, the checkout stand, so that might be something we could. Talk to them about, but anyway, I just wanted to update everybody, and those are, I believe, were only two retail outlets, yeah. Um, so let me open it to, uh, any questions, counselors or comments?
Because now I know my name, but I can't say it as a safe word.
More of that's what it says.
People just go in and ask these companies if they are. People who are concerned about this can go in and talk to the store owners and look at the cigarettes, I think that would. Be a little shocking that people are regularly coming into these stores concerned about the cigarettes, so. That might be something that could be helpful, but thank you, it was a great presentation.
You mind if I ask about enforcement, um, that, you know, it's one of our, uh, greatest challenges in a small city. Um, is enforcement of any code, um, can you share, you know, if there's. If there are any similar communities, small communities with limited resources, can you share any kind of success stories with enforcement of, uh, T R L? Anyone, yeah, I mean, and we do ask you to go to the. Just so that people can hear in Zoomlandia and whatnot.
That's good, yes, period, um, so, uh, uh, for Sonoma County, there are some smaller, um, jurisdictions, like smaller cities within, um, the Sonoma County area. And I know, um, at least for, um, tobacco, but I mean, they have thirteen retailer, well now twelve, because actually their retail went down once they enacted the T R L. Um, but for, for them, um, it enabled them to go by the stores more often because they were collecting a fee from to the retailers, right? That then funded them, and so they were able to go in there, but. It served for to, to, um, not just going in for tobacco checks, right, they were going in for the alcohol, that, you know, the twenty-one is, you know, that's the age for everyone. You know, for alcohol and tobacco, so it enabled them to go buy more of their stores more often, and they, that they felt like that was definitely a benefit. So it was, but it helped to fund that piece of it, so it's, it's, it's a self-claimed funding, uh, policy, it's not just another thing that's tapped onto what they're doing.
Sure.
However, we, what we did also is met with law enforcement and made sure that they were on the same page and that they, this was something that they wanted. And they felt like it aligned with their community, uh, police, you know, community, uh, policing and things like that, it, with their cop program, it like worked well with them, so. That was a good thing, you know, so I guess those were like, that's a success in terms of their being able to go in there more often and, and developing more relationships with retailers. And then as our, the agencies that we work with, the ones that are down there that are near us, were able to go in and do some education, just like you, you know, uh. Mentioned as well, Council West is that they, we went in, did education with them around the T R L policy and talked to them about it, and they started voluntarily doing. More like making stricter kind of policies for themselves, and were taking things off the shelf, making it not by law. That weren't even in the actual city's laws. It was kind of, it was, it was good, I think it was a good, it was a better relationship. And integrating retailers and the community and law enforcement more, you know, for youth health, so. But I felt like that was a success.
Thank you.
Other questions? Right, let me open to public comments or questions for the team. Don't see any questions, so you've done a very thorough, thank you so much, this is very interesting, the council will continue to, uh, you know, kind of mull this over and also talk. Thank you.
Yeah, feel free to reach, to reach out to us with whatever you would be suggesting, we can run it through the process here.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next, uh, agenda item is a discussion decision regarding the twenty twenty-two State Transportation Improvement Program, uh, which is, uh, a Trinity Street pavement. Rehab project, so Eli, I think you're going to cover that for us.
Right, yeah, so this was provided by Josh Wolf from G H D. And, uh, so we're able to receive two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars from the STIP funding. Uh, which will recap the pavement on Trinity Street, and, uh, it is proposed for, uh. The construction would actually be happening, I believe, next year, since they do say, uh, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And, uh. And as far as I could tell, it was repaving Trinity's. And, uh, and then attached to that is the contract, uh, proposal for the engineering services for the rehab project. With, uh, G H D to do the work, and, uh, the very last. Let's see, towards the end of it, it actually shows construction and engineering. Will be happening next year in twenty twenty-four, uh, this year we'll have the, uh, environmental document prepared. And then also have the plan specifications and estimates. So the environmental document should be done by July first and the, uh, plan specifications and estimates by the end of December. With construction and engineering, the bid process and everything all happening in twenty twenty-four. And then the very last page shows the cost breakdown for G H D services, uh, to prepare the plans, et cetera. So wait, I can entertain any questions or comments that, uh, council or public have.
Any questions?
I assume that in December we would get some sort of, uh, you know, design. Coming back to council.
Exactly.
So that if we approve this tonight, there's other opportunities for folks to weigh in and.
Right.
Say, hey, this is what we want to do with Trinity Street.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, and, and then also, uh, uh, next month at our lunch meeting, Josh Wolf, the traffic engineer from G H D. Uh, will be present for that other item that we moved, and then we can also ask him, uh, you know. A little bit more definitive on this, but, but yes, it will be coming back with the plans for the council to approve.
Do you happen to know how, how long ago it was from this page before, it seems like it's in pretty good shape, but.
Yeah.
Does anyone know?
I'm turning to Dave, this has been your more.
I think when we did the stormwater project and dug up the whole street, that was, I don't know if the entire street was paved, but at least a half.
Good point.
That's actually from, uh, that's all in front of your place, this way.
Yeah, this is a lot, no, I think it was beyond our house, a little farther. Yeah, it's still, and it's, it's, if you go on, walk up and down the street, this is pretty bad shape, but it's a decent lot of work. I'm complaining about it because I'm just surprised how it passes to Jerry. I hope this will not only bring it back to a standard, but also help it stay that way, because I lost a lot of the street over the last. There's just too many big trucks coming up the other street, so I think it's a great idea, I'm glad it's getting.
And, um, the money has to all be earmarked for Trinity, we can't use it for any other street repair.
Yeah, that's correct, right.
And I'll ask this of Josh last month.
Yeah.
About, is there a way to, like, if we know trucks are moving up and down the street, is there some way they can engineer it to be? And I'll ask this of Josh last month about, is there a way to, right, if we know trucks are moving up and down the street, is there some way they can engineer it to be a little more resilient? It's a good idea. I'll try to remember to ask that next week or next.
Well, that's that's one of the good things about our city is between Main Street, Trinity and Edwards. You know, we've got three streets that basically carry the bulk of the traffic.
Right.
That's true. It's me like, oh, she gets a great number.
Yeah, you're a runner up.
Um yeah, so I was thinking of the Parker Creek, uh you know, that.
Oh, yeah.
Can you talk about that stuff? Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, can only do this project too, to be, I just kind of look at trying to. Get all get more traffic to come down Trinity Street and avoid ocean and view. I mean, we've talked about this for years, trying to direct traffic. Maybe that would be something we'll be trying to try to get traffic to travel.
That's a great thing to bring up with Josh. It's 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 been mentioned before. So it would be great to tie it in into a formal uh program.
Um okay, it's the public comment. So there are your public comments about the step. I I see your public comments, so we uh I think that's a wrap and I'll look forward to hearing from Josh in our next meeting and we'll talk about the traffic on the. Agenda item at that time.
I think we need to, yeah, well, vote on the. Yeah, we need to. I would move that we authorize city manager to execute task order with G H D. To complete the environmental engineering construction and service for twenty two STIP Trinity Rehab Project.
I'll second that. And Jack seconded, so all of us are favored.
Aye.
All right, uh next up is a discussion decision regarding the temporary closure of the Axelwender Memorial Trail and the Parker Creek uh Trail each access to the Oldham Beach. And you know, I think we had a, we're gonna open up this topic for us.
Yeah. Yes, I will welcome this. I didn't make the following comment in the agenda packet. Uh so the Axelwender Memorial Trail and the Parker Creek Trail. And the Parker Creek Trail is just a beach access portion uh are currently closed. Uh otherwise, the Parker Creek Trail and the Old Wagon Trail. You people could still walk that way uh without uh being being closed. And uh this is a temporary emergency closure uh due to luff erosion as well as debris from recent storms that battered the coast. Uh a C C D P is required within thirty days of closure, which will be towards uh somewhere around between the tenth and twelfth. Of uh March. The city engineer and city planner are working with staff as well as the Health or the Coastal Commission, Coastal Conservancy. The Chirai Incessible Society, the Eurocrade. We discussed this at the Chirai uh management team meetings where these different uh parties were present. So several meetings have taken place. We had another meeting um on Monday and we have a meeting coming up on the thirteenth. In the meantime, uh I've also uh spoke today to Steve Allen again, our city engineer. And I also spoke to Giovanni, who works with S H M and was the engineer, actually a geologist. He was the geologist who prepared. A two thousand and four report regarding the uh beach area. And uh Giovanni is supposed to be coming next week and when he does comes. Steve Allen will join and I will go down to the uh beach and we'll walk in that area and find out. Uh some suggestions from both the engineer and the geologist on what. Short-term measures can be done so that we can reopen the trails as quick as possible. So so that's that's the goal. Uh we we want to make sure that, number one, that it's safe. Uh and number two, that we have a good way to uh. Help address some of the erosion that's happening in that area. Uh with the from the recent storms uh where the high tide has uh battered the uh the coast there. So I will entertain any questions or questions.
Elon?
I have one. Um I've seen people going down anyhow, even though it's picked off. Is the city liable in any way?
No, uh the uh our insurance company, we we did that with specifically the Van Winkle Trail. And uh they had requested that we for Van Winkle, that we just put close signs. And and we do have a chain across on both sides of Van Winkle. So here in this case, we say closed and we've got uh three uh of the barricades uh connect, you know, right right by each other. Just saying that it's closed. So at that point, the insurance company is comfortable that, uh you know, we don't have that liability. Uh or if it do, it's minimized. Otherwise, we have had signage before for the Axelwender Trail, which indicated that it was in poor condition. And uh basically to to do it at your own risk. So because we closed it, we removed that sign for the time being. But the the prior sign was uh word worded exactly how our insurance company had suggested that it be worded. So so we're trying to follow as much as possible, uh you know, the proper protocol for safety and liability.
Other questions for Elon?
Alex, when do we have a, I think, are you pretty sure we will have all these trails open by some?
That's the goal and and I I personally, again, I'll just say this first. I can see no reason that they wouldn't be closed that long and and hopefully, uh you know, within a couple of months for sure. So as soon as we can, we will have them open. Uh we just want to make sure that 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 area where there is the erosion. Is properly addressed by both the geologist and the engineer.
And I guess I'll just comment that I um was strongly supportive of closing the trails. Because we were working with so many different groups that were supportive of that as well, including CHAS, the Eurocrade. Help when your coastal conservancy, et et cetera. Uh. I do think that the Parker Creek, again, my personal opinion is that. We we closed on February tenth. It was a thirty day emergency C D P. And my personal opinion is that we should open the Parker Creek Trail at that for B J. Window if we can, leaving potentially the Axelwender Trail closed because it is in the worst shape. Um it would be nice to be able to do the work uh as quickly as possible to shore up. By any natural uh, you know, uh issues that we have down there. Um so you know, whatever we can do to shore up using uh maybe debris that we have that we can. Rocks or logs on the avenue would be great. But anyway, that's that's my thought is that we're gonna have to open up one of the trails because we're getting into spring and summer, but. But we'll see how it goes.
And you'll report back uh after walking the beach with Steve and Giovanni then to. To get their recommendations about how is this a, you know, something that a a a public. Sort of, you know, volunteer crew could get some work done or is it is it going to require? You know, much greater. So that that would be my question regarding the, you know, what to do after thirty days. Is to have a better sense of, is this something that we can, you know, mitigate until next year's storms? Uh with some more some more heavy duty work or is this something that really is is gotta be? A more of an engineered approach.
Right.
All I would ask is that, what month are we? February at our March meeting that we would get an update, you know?
Yeah.
To know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, but the plan is is to uh meet with both of them before our March meeting.
Good.
Uh in addition to that, uh some of the conversations that we had, we're dealing with what would be considered. Number one, a short-term fix in order to get the trails open quickly. Uh number two, uh what they are calling a medium fix, which they're foreseeing possibly for up to twenty years. And then a long-term fix, which hopefully will go much longer than that. Uh I see that the long-term fix would be probably coinciding with our coastal resilience plan. Uh and and then I see the other two, the short-term and midterm. Uh being addressed by the engineers and geologists in in, you know, in. As quick as possible, at least for the short term. Because uh beach access is really important for our community. Uh personally, I just feel like uh. Uh you you know, that uh right now, because it is not the heavy visitor season, it's really just our residents. Uh but again, we want to make sure that people are safe. Don't want them to go down there and and not be safe. Uh so I I think as soon as we can get that short-term portion done, uh I would I would like to see the trails open.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I mean, it's one of the things where we have competing priorities, right? We, on the one hand, we want. Preservation and protection and and on the other hand, we want public access and those are both huge priorities for the city, so. Um so I think we're all um very excited to move forward, so.
And I would ask that we that we reach out to the land trust, the to that coastal land trust. They have um. Annual efforts to restore their their access points. Um and it's always the last twenty steps that they're working. Right? And so um I I believe that we have the expertise in the area to to do something a little different than what we're doing. Um and I would encourage us, these trails would be a great place to kind of get get our feet under us in that in in that respect. Let's do something different than just hope it gets better. Right? So that that would be my encouragement to also bring in. I see a lot of these folks on. On your your write-up here and I I would add that or ask that we add the the land trust is because.
Yeah.
They've got six or seven access spots on on the coast that they're trying to maintain.
Hmm.
And they, you know, they employ a quite a a large group of volunteers, but they do get it done without. You know, tractors and cranes. I mean, they're doing it with with, you know, what they can carry, so. Anyway, I just think there's a a solution out there for us.
Good.
For suggestion. All right, let me open up to public comment and I'll also. Mention that there were a few E S P O's that are in the packets or if none of the packets are online for the council. Um and we see one of those. Any other comments? In Zoom land or? In the room? Right? We want to um look at any of those public comments that came in. Let me just see. I think I think it might have just been one, so let me have a quick look here.
In the meantime, I did want to mention that uh at uh the Coastal Commission at our last meeting. Was talking about the table bluff reservation, we ought try and that they were talking about how that was addressed. Which was done uh between two thousand and three and two thousand and four. So that's uh in Humboldt Bay where Indian Island is. And they used a process there uh which they were referring to. And let me get the proper burger here, so just give me one moment. Uh so they placed three hundred ninety one cubic yards of revetment, R E V E T M E N T. I looked it up. It's just materials along a four hundred foot long segment of the bay shoreline of Indian Island to stabilize. And protect the mound place from further shoreline erosion. Help prevent remaining artifacts, cultural resources and just the uh erosion that was happening along that shoreline. So basically, the revetment materials is a way to help address shorelines and erosion with shorelines.
Oh, interesting. I was not familiar with the vetting either, so thank you. Um so we do have the uh public comment on the uh screen and I won't read the whole. I know, but and since it's uh opposed to closure of the trails. Uh and so this uh individual is asking us to open as soon as possible. So we will read that public comment. The council as well and and take it under advisement. So thank you. Uh with that, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the discussion of presentation about the mid-year uh budget. And so for that, I am turning it over to Eli.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just start off real briefly. Uh Gabe is our guru and. Uh I'm really fortunate on a staff level to have someone who not only. Knows what it's doing regarding this, but has been doing it for quite a while, uh or at least quite a while since then. So uh so basically, we've got the uh. Budget, which will be coming up uh. That we would need to approve for the following year, but based upon last year's budget, we like to do a mid-year budget review. And in order to do the proper mid-year budget review, you have to wait until you get all the data from the first two quarters. Of the fiscal year, which would be from July first uh until December thirty first. So we finally got the December materials, the financials, which are included in the packet and then also under this uh. Discussion item. So I'll just turn it over to Gabe and and let him take it from here.
Thank you. Okay, so. I'm just gonna pull a Dick Bruce here and read a little bit from the prepared uh document that I wrote up just to keep me on target because I. This is a an assignment I could. I I kind of geek out on sometimes and I really dive into the numbers and I could be talking all night, but I I don't want to do that. It's cold. Kind of get moving, so uh thank you. Yeah, so. But I, so I just want to make uh, you know, make a couple of points here. Uh I do look over the financial statements periodically. And I I I am pretty aware of what's going on with with our financial situation. And if I wasn't, I would bring it to your attention. I think that's. Your job as council members, which is kind of how I start off here. It's a public entities operate on the fiscal year. Cycle beginning July first and ending June thirty. And let me pause for a second. I'm gonna kind of just. Gear down for a second because Katie's with us and she may have not had the benefit of learning, you know, some of these um. You know, kind of understanding how the city's budget works. So I kind of took a minute to had a couple of notes here about. About how the system works, right? So we have a, we have a, the city hasn't. Has a obligation to um adopt a budget. Uh plan, a spending plan by honor before July first of every year. Uh and periodically through the year, it's fiscal responsible for governing boards to do a pulse check on revenues and expenses and ensure that their plans are on track. Um it makes sense to do this mid-year for us, obviously now. Last year we didn't because we had so many meeting targets, so we just kind of plowed through the year. And then in a year, we kind of poked our heads out of the dirt and we're like, ah, we do, you know? Uh and and we actually did pretty well, but we we lost a lot of employees. Uh we had a lot of what's called adversity. And um we weren't able to spend money. So at the end of, and we had a couple of odd revenue sources, so ended up coming out ahead. But we didn't achieve a lot of the things that we wanted to do. All right. So um anyway, the tools that we use to develop. The framework for our our budget structure are the following. And I listened to him on the website, which might be kind of hard to read. But if you have your packets open, it's number one, it's our annual budget, which we adopt on four July of every year. Uh budget summaries and narratives included in the meeting packets during the budget preparation. Those are the things that I actually write up. To make sense of these numbers and I oftentimes kind of harken back to them throughout the year when we do these. Budget discussions because I'm looking back at what I kind of forecasted for the year, what we were anticipating. And then now six months later, or even nine months later, we can look back and say, hey. Were we on the right track? So those narratives I try to keep close with me throughout this process and you'll probably see them again here in the next couple of months when we break open the. The twenty twenty four budget. Um discussion. So the detailed financial reports, which are provided by the bookkeeper, those are those. You know, fourteen pages following this agenda topic here in the packet. Um that look like a bunch of numbers showing you your, they're basically your profit and loss uh statements for each one of the city's budget categories. Uh and then the the last two things in the general ledger. That is a very huge and extended Excel spreadsheet detailing every single expenditure. So when when we see something odd in those budget. Uh profit loss sheets, let's call them. Uh somebody says, why is this so huge and why are we out of luck there? I can actually go to the general ledger. And find exactly what was allocated to that budget line item and I can tell you what it was for. So I can explain some of these anomalies. Uh and then finally, the annual audit, which is what our uh auditor Ralph Marcel has been doing every year. He basically checks all of our work at the end of every year. He checks for loss potential. He checks for, you know, uh honesty. He checks to make sure that our books are in order as per the state guidance. So we have a lot of different ways and different. So we have a lot of different ways and different tools that we use to manage the city's budget. Uh, so included in this attachment uh, is everything but the general ledger or in the packet is everything but the general ledger and the annual audit, obviously. The audit we're going to be talking about next month, hopefully in summary, we'll be able to just put it up on as a maybe as a consent item unless Ralph can be here. But I'm going to cover just a couple of things in that are covered in this audit tonight. Give you, give everyone a chance to to ask questions. So a quick overview, the budget consists of of individual budgets within the following structure. So you've got the general fund. And the general fund makes, it it has four primary categories, the administrative category, the public works category, uh, police and fire. And uh, those general fund expenditures come from our revenues such as uh, sales tax, occupancy tax, and different unrestricted funding sources. So in those four funds, this council has the authority to spend money on whatever it chooses to spend on things that are not restricted. And restricted funds are the water in the cemetery primarily. We also have special revenues that are kind of also called restricted funds. Um, but we call them special revenues, and those are gas taxes and transportation funds. Cops funding, which is a grant that we receive money from every year. And those monies cannot be used to, you know, buy you lie a new desk. You know, they have to be specifically used for specifics. So grants then is the fourth category, and those grants are are vital, as we all know in this room, are vital resource of revenue in the city that helps fund our critical, big picture infrastructure uh, and long range plan. So so that's that's the the framework for our city budget. So I talked about the types of revenues that cover the general fund, restricted revenues. Um, and I and I made a note here in this report that the staff report from the June twenty-eight, twenty-two meeting was a benchmark for us indicating the city's thought process in the financial reporting and forecasting to develop our spending plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And some of those highlights I just picked apart from the report, which are also in the packet. Uh, I just have three of them here. So number one was due to worse staffing issues experienced in the prior year. It was understood that this year would be uh, a year to prioritize recruiting and training new staff, which is what we're doing. Uh, for the most part, the water department, we're kind of trying, but the rest of it. On Jennifer, uh, even John Vick, who we're with Public Works. Most of you know his face and seen him around now. That's these, this is what we said we were going to invest in, and this is what we're doing. Uh, monitoring under anticipated revenue sources and economic trends to determine whether dipping into the reserves would be necessary as dipping into the general fund reserve at the twenty-five Ks possible. We, we did that. Um, but not that much, you know, our under anticipated revenue sources have actually proven to be better and healthier than what we expect. I was, I always budget conservatively for their cities revenue. So when you read our budget reports, you're going to see revenues that are conservative. You're going to see expenditures um, that I uh, that I I'm kind of liberal. So that, you know, kind of kind of in a weird way, at the end of the year, we generally end up okay. Because we're, I'm I'm not expecting money to come in that may not come in. All of our revenue sources are volatile. Sales taxes and occupancy taxes are two biggest ones, and they could change at any time. Uh, property taxes are staying. So I can budget property taxes perfectly, but I can't necessarily budget sales and occupancy taxes uh, accurately. Because as we learned from COVID, we shut down for a quarter and all of a sudden your revenue stream dried up. So um, uh, the third thing was anticipating a year-end spending deficit in the water fund of at least two hundred K. Another hundred and sixty or more for twenty twenty-three if the staffing solution isn't implemented. For instance. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. We're seeing that happen and unfolding right before our eyes. Uh, and it's 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 not getting any better. Uh, and and we budgeted for it. We saw this coming. So um, what else can I do here? So there is a a page in here that I'm going to touch on uh, for a second in a in a minute, uh, which which we call Ralph called it the uh, un-audited supplementary supplementary budget information. And uh, it's kind of a long word, basically for saying, uh, hey, I'm going to show you, he did this. He's going to show us in a real quick chart, which is in the packet, what we budgeted and where we ended up in about six categories. And it's awesome. That's good. Uh, and and I'll I'll point that to you here on the on the screen here in a second. Uh, but it appears that sales tax revenue once again exceeded expectations. Property tax, this is for the audit that we just uh, finished. Uh, the property taxes and occupancy taxes did did also did very well. Um, uncollected fees for planning and building services from previous years were recovered in twenty twenty-two. Uh, but interest income was down significantly this last year. The economy, the the stock markets didn't do so well, and typically, I think the city puts well over twenty-five thousand dollars or more in its pocket every year, just from the interest invested in W A F and other funds. Um, I think this last year it was fairly sick. It was a pretty big loss.
And just as a quick note to that, we also had a stormwater project. So we had to draw money out of W A F to have that ready to pay the cash flow, the cash flow before we could actually uh, go ahead and put money back in towards the end.
That's true.
Oh, so that's that's the another loss of our interest is that money was pulled out.
So um, and we're probably going to see that again with this big uh, water infrastructure.
With the, yeah. What you call the tank replacement.
So uh, regarding expenditures overall, the city underspent in all of the general fund expense categories uh, except for the administrative categories, and that was primarily due to higher than average legal services. There are a lot going on in this last prior year, legal service wise. Um, but we uh, anticipated a conservative revenue expectations and underspent. Underspending did that. So it all found balance out in the wash. So staffing, um, I I put a staff organizational chart in the packet because there's been some questions about, you know, who's doing what around here and what's with our water department? You know, who's who's full-time, who's part-time? Uh, what are we doing? And this just kind of opens the door, I think, for that conversation tonight, whether you want to get into it, I don't know. But uh, I I just kind of put some notes in here about our staffing and our full-time equivalent staff. Uh, we still are employing approximately eight people uh, based on the combination of full and part-time staff. Uh, so we we we, you know, one person would, if it's a part-time person, it's point five F T. So full-time equivalent, so half-time equivalent person. Um, and and even though there might be ten people working here, we're really only employing about eight full-time. Uh, or I'm sorry. Eight people total, five full-time actually. We're still waiting to hire our full-time grant administrator coming on board this uh, next month, Angela Zetter. And we're still trying to kind of swim our way through the water, you know, staff. Uh, which which are projects that were working. Um, let's see.
And and nine, just nine F T is is, we were at something like seven and a half for the longest time, right?
Barely, yeah.
Six and a half to seven and a half, if I remember correctly. Okay.
And we, we uh,
I just think it's important to say that. And yeah, this is a pet project of mine, I guess, is or just something I'm really grateful for is that with the nine full-time equivalent employees, we don't have the backlog and we don't have the complaints that Trinidad takes so long to do everything. And it's really, I just want to say that it's it's so easy to observe the benefit of having all these people working for the city. So I just want to say that.
It's a great point because that was, that was um, the justification basically for, you know, hiring was just um, you know, Anton sitting next to me here and and Jennifer. And I'll touch on the septic program in a minute as a as a quick, it's called a highlight, low light. Um, but but those programs just kind of sat idle and collected dust, and those were priorities made by the council. But, you know, you can, you can, we can sit here and create programs all day long, but you know, people do it.
Yeah.
And you predetermined that that's a priority of the city. City has an obligation to fault. So we've been able to do that. We put those wheels in motion from an administrative perspective, but you're right. You know, the city had typically operated on about six full-time people in the past, so we've made some changes to that. And I'd say uh, a lot of it has to do with regulatory environment of the world that we live in today. You know, there's so many regulations and there's so many mandates, some of them funded and as we learned tonight, unfunded from the tobacco folks. Um, you know, that that uh, we're we're pretty lucky. We're targeting a lot of the funded ones. And we've got creative grant people to go target those funds, to those grant funds to help the city meet its funding man or its mandate. So um, so anyway, the financial packets included in in the the financial statements, including in this meeting packet, uh, cover all activity from July first through December thirty-first. Uh, it's a easy scan of the primary funds, revenue, admin, public works, fire. Just my eyes kind of reiterating to you what I'm seeing. Um, depict spending at or near fifty percent midway through the year. When we had a, you know, some some of the guys that used to work for the city as council members, Jim Cuttersen was one of them that I used to uh, you know, argue with all the time about this, is he to go down and he would see anything more than fifty percent at six months, he's like, something's out of control, something's out of luck, and it doesn't always work. You know, some of our expenditures are one-time expenditures. So you might see a column in our staff in our uh, financial statements that say hundred percent or zero. You know, that means we spent it all already, but you kind of have to read between the lines to know what that expenditure was. You know, but for the most part, as I read through all of those statements, I mean, we were right at fifty percent on average for everything. And the bottom line depicts that. In some cases, or at least in most cases, there's some where it's a little bit over and under, such as our fire department. They just budget, they expect the worst thing to happen, but they you know, in terms of spending, they're really thrifty and they get things done. Um, two of my primary concerns when I looked at this budget or when I looked at the financial statements, obviously, are the water fund and the septic. And I, the septic program, you know, it's not a a huge concern. And I'm not saying it's uh, there's any right way to fix it. It's nothing but good for the community in terms of, you know, the the goals, you know, to make sure that people have functioning septic systems that are working and not creating public health hazard for their neighbors.
So I think we had one, they'll know about like the water challenges because we've talked about that a lot. We can talk about it some more. But can you elaborate a little bit on this subject? Like, where's the, where's the overflow coming issue?
One. So yeah, we have a lot of septic. So the septic is is pretty much overspent uh, in our audit from last year, eleven thousand dollars, which isn't bad. Um, but relative to the fees that come in. So the city has predetermined what the fee is for a septic permit for a resident. You know, if you have a standard system, it's a hundred bucks. Your non-standard system is seventy-five. If you come back and do your renewals two years later, it's seventy-five plus. Um, so what's happening is that we're we're figuring out now that we've kicked this program into high gear. Jennifer Hagan, who's listening, I think, out there in Zoom land.
Yep.
Uh, you know, she's done a really good job of hering cats. I I have seen Steve Septic Service patrolling town more than I've ever seen him. And you can smell him too. He's pumping next year. Um, but he uh, they, that program is um, it's just, it's just lit up. They're they're, you know, these inspection reports come into us on a regular basis, but not all of them are straightforward. When Steve Septic Service finds and writes a report that says, hey, guess what? Your lease lines have failed. We have no idea. We can't fill out your report any further because your lease line has failed.
I don't have it.
Now, you know, we we're getting into a dialogue with residents and Trevor Parker, our staff planner, has to really kind of dig through with a fine-tooth comb. And we need to start documenting several conversations with the residents saying, God, we had no idea we had a failing system. Sorry, city of Trinidad. And then city of Trinidad says, well, have Steve Septic Service send us the quote for the work being done so we can keep our finger on the pulse. We don't track this. Next thing you know, we've got these, you know, you know, two, three, four hours invested. Uh, and Trevor's been in the city for her time categorized to O W T S. Jennifer is kind of building a fat fat file on this one particular property. But the point is to collect the data. So do we want to like do a cost recovery system for septic systems like we do for planning? Um, those are bigger questions that I think the council and Trevor Parker can, city planner can kind of help figure out.
Just you see that changing as we get a bit of grip on the whole thing?
Yes. You know, we we always knew that the initial push coming out of the gates on this thing is going to be ugly. And that's why it took seven years to get it off the ground, because every one person working for the city, ten years to get off. What, I mean, once they started this, it became this giant can of worms, you know? And when people hear that their septic system failed, they don't call us up, Catherine. You know, they're not, they're resisting, if anything, like, oh, God, don't tell the city, you know? And then we're trying to get information, find out what's going on. For the, for the most part, people have been very wobbly. And it's not cheap if you've got a failed system, right?
I know that.
It's not something people just say, oh, how much is it? I'll write a check. Let's fix it. They have to dig deep sometimes to. But they dig new lease lines or put a new tank in or something, and that's not cheap. So then now the city is saying, hey, let's evaluate what they've got going on. Let's see how far we're willing to let them go. Let's put this all in writing. You know, the cash register is now chiming in because Trevor is writing this all up. And then six months later, or three months later, or six weeks later, we're putting the lid on this um, project and writing somebody a permit for three. So it's just a big project. And I'm kind of thinking this year, instead of eleven thousand, it might kind of creep up into the ten or fifteen or fifteen thousand, maybe more. If we continue on this, it's not their best.
Percentage rises, whatever it's been, but in real dollars, it's just like.
Right. And we're we're expecting this to to, once we get on a regular inspection uh, routine
Yeah.
that we're not going to see these large project kind of approaches to wow, your system is, you know, is years out of compliance. And therefore, it needs a lot of back and forth, right? We were expecting sort of the 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 front-end loaded kind of expenses, but then it should calm down a little bit. So if we do a a pricing discussion later on, I I would just, it sounds like we're not talking about, well, this is the new normal. Instead, this is, you know, this is sort of this concerted effort to point out how much work needs to be done. But in the future, it shouldn't be so significant, right? Right? Whatever that.
It's costing me business now. If you want to, if you want to call it something like that, you could say, well, it's the cost of doing business. We want to protect the coast. We want to protect the water quality down here. We want to protect public health. You know, we've made a commitment to do that. Stick with it. You know, let's let's have the city kind of absorb those costs. The only thing that makes it complicated is that the city went out of its way to create a a a permit fee recovery structure. So now I guess we're, we have to just kind of, kind of, we'll go another year and just kind of see where we land and and take it from there. But we're, you know, so we're basically taking a hundred dollars from somebody to do, you know, meaning what was ended up being about three, five hundred dollars worth. So um,
times two hundred whatever properties, that's actually.
Yeah, and wait, wait till our project is in, we'll jump the price up.
Yeah, let's wait till your project is. So so the water step.
I was just wondering why my fee was five times as much as what was mentioned, but I was like.
Pay for Jack.
Thank you. State of the council tax.
Yeah. Anyway, so uh, don't remind too big, uh, you know, when I looked at the statements, everything looks to be again, where's the patients, infected, even under? Because we still have um, we still have fully staffer benefited, you know, it's full-time employees over at the water chicken plant.
Yeah.
But we're paying on the high end of consultant. So um, anyway, that's what I call um, so anyway, uh, you know, this was the staff report that I had, I highlighted a couple of things in in the usually twenty twenty-two kind of budget approval narrative. Um, and I highlighted, you know, a June thirty, twenty twenty-three uh, year in, we're projected to spend a hundred and sixty thousand. Now that was with, I think we had uh, Coleman sort of uh, sunsetting.
Taking off, yeah.
Uh, mid-year. So my guess is depending on where. So we had our goal set up for us, uh, utilize reserves established from prior fiscal years, which we did.
Can I ask about that real quick?
Yeah.
Um, will we, when when's a good time to sort of pose the question, okay, we've been dipping into our reserves for the last couple of years? Do we need, is that? Do we need, is that more of a, of a next year's budget discussion? Saying, hey, our reserves have taken quite a beating the last two years. And propose some sort of way to bring it back up because we've, we've benefited from having those reserves, but kind of like the interest, lost interest income, right? The, the, the less money you have in there, the less money you have to do work.
Yeah. And the water rate study. So as soon as we get that in place. Uh.
That'll help us recover.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. And then like I have noted, uh, we're pursuing, uh, the it, it's called RCA C, which, uh, it did it for free for the city of Russell City. So we need to see if we qualify for that. But that would be great to, if we can get the water rate study done at that place.
I just want to put it on people's radar that, that our reserve has really been hit pretty significantly and we ought to work on ways to bring it back up to the levels that we agreed upon several years ago.
Yes. And, and I think to focus that, the water fund. Primary.
Yeah.
And here's one. So what I, what I mentioned, I just kind of touched on it. We call it the, the required supplementary supplemental supplementary information on audit. This came from our audit this year. This is a separate document that he sent. It's a great tool. I like this one a lot because it, it kind of tells you, you know, where you ended up this last year in the bank, you know, relative to, it, it's just, it's just money. It's revenues. So, so what you see, if you can read this, I just kind of want to point out, he made a nice chart. So for property tax here, I go across this line right here. Hundred thirteen thousand, five twenty-five is what we budgeted. But the county tax assessor has been going around targeting Trinidad. Uh, because I guess there's a lot of properties that went into like a prop, something I forgot what it's called during the housing market crash years ago. They went into like kind of a property tax freeze from their assessed increases each year. And then county tax, like auditor's office or assessors office been going around the last two years, reassessing Trinidad properties. Because I guess Trinidad has some nice property that have good value that the county wasn't creeping from. Because a lot of these properties were in like a tax increase freeze or an assessed value freeze.
Yeah, after two thousand and eight. Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, so here we were, we landed this last year with a hundred and thirty thousand. But this is a, a, a positive variance from what we budgeted of sixteen five. You go across the line. This one got my attention. We budgeted two hundred and eighty thousand in retail sales tax. And this is where we landed.
Yeah, that's a good one.
So, you know, I, I didn't say I missed the mark, but I do budget conservatively when it comes to sales. And this was so big. And it was a kind of an unintended consequence of kind of the COVID year kind of, uh, so in the wake of COVID year and people started shopping online. So, so instead of shopping and local, doing their shopping in local retailers, they were doing everything on Amazon and everywhere else. And when people do that, that increases the city's sales tax. So there is another variance in a positive category, uh, for the city. A couple of other occupancy taxes, we landed a little bit heavier. Um, to get the license fee, that's not so exciting. Building and buying fees, um, here actually, this is a result of having extra employees that we can kind of go and really get these fee recovery mechanisms executed. Because a lot of times we didn't do that in a month, you know, residents were subsidizing, you know, someone else's, uh, third story. You leave a somewhere and that's not how that system is supposed to work. You know, in the planning process, in the building fee process. Uh, so bottom line, this number right here is, uh, Steve, this is kind of what we were talking about in reserves. This is what we actually, let's call it bank.
Yeah.
Right? So we banked that in the form of our, um, you know, replenished our reserves from any, any, any underspending a year before. Um.
This was the first half of this year.
This was the finished, this was the finished prior fiscal year, June thirty.
I see. So June thirty, twenty-two.
We budgeted, yeah, we budgeted eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred in expenditures, and that includes Anton, Jennifer, self, part of Eli, salary, portion of all of our salaries, city attorney, city building inspector, plan. You know, of keeping the lights on, let's just say. And we ended up, um, we, we budgeted this much in revenue and we ended up with. So putting that into city's reserves for a rainy year day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Positive. Water fund. Different. So we're going to focus anywhere, we're going to focus on our water fund. And then that's going to come in the form of a raid study. And that's going to come in the form of what we, what we believe is our ideal staffing solution, what we can operate on. We're going to have to kind of really focus our, our, the one amount of water fund based on what we think we need and what we expect we need, not kind of this crazy, you know, place that we're in.
So it sounds like you don't see any major kind of derailments, just some cautionary issues around water and OTVTS. And we knew the staffing costs were going to increase, but we're seeing a cost benefit relationship. OTVTS, we're seeing, you know, some, some additional expenditure, but it's, it was to be expected that we'd have a blip at the beginning. So is there, is there anything else that kind of jumped out at you when you looked at this day that was like? Hey, or not? Yeah. I mean, this was good news, by the way. So the banking of this additional money last fiscal was, was very positive.
Last fiscal year and then the prior fiscal, yeah. And we expected this to happen because we didn't have the, we were just getting administrative staff on. And, and they were here for seven months, I think, uh, once the fiscal year last year, June thirty, with that, there's seven more. So we're still getting their feet wet. Um, and they had not expended money because we didn't have the people to do so. This year, we're kind of moving into that territory from a public works perspective, certainly not our water fund. But, um, I don't, I didn't see anything else that really jumped out. That's a really good question. And I, and I think that the city is in a helping place. And I'd also like to maybe open this budget year up. When we do our budget season discussions, not to say that we're in a place where we should be kind of being really, um, too liberal with our spending. But I think it would be a great opportunity to explore with the public. If there are, or even as council members, you know, things like, let's just say the underground utility project. Let's just see if there's a way we can start investing these. Um, these, the, these savings kind of amortized over time. Of course, we're not expecting to just take that money and drop it on under. But, um, you know, things like that, projects that we haven't had a chance to really fully formulate because we don't know, we haven't been able to see kind of where we're going to land. But now that we do know, uh, we have a little better output and forecast. I think we could entertain some of these projects that are kind of reinvestments in the community. I think the city is looking pretty good. Uh, I'd love to see more money spent on trails, you know, improvements. And I think that money is earmarked for that. I'd love to see that happen, but I know there's a lot of politics around that. That's where council is, uh, you know, hopefully.
We're making.
Opens the doors on that.
Make progress. I don't think it's kind of a net question, but on the, the printouts, the percentage is at the bottom. So the way I read this is the current month expenditure, year-to-date, total budget original, and then the percentage of budget. It seems like it's inverse, like.
It is. Okay. Got to use the word, uh, left. So you have, uh, so I always put the word left in front of it. So if I go across to like some of our sales tax right here.
A bit remaining.
We have fifty-five percent. Well, this is the wrong one. But fifty, uh, this is, these are, these are revenue. So like, if I go to the other changes. Yeah, so. Like payroll tax.
Yeah, certainly. I'm ready. Yeah, I want to, you, the Tennessee.
And that's where you were saying that Cutherson was saying, all these numbers, fifty.
Yeah, it goes down the line. It should be fifty on December thirty-first. Like, no, that's not really helpful.
Yeah, I know. It's, I'm looking at the total.
Yeah, I'm going to try to zoom in so anybody can see here, but you know, this one right here. So year-to-date, we spent five thousand, six oh five of our budgeted amount, twelve, zero, four, zero. Which means we have fifty-three percent left.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah. I read it. I'm just going to look at the other way, but okay.
So that. I, I, it confused me every time I look at this thing. Like I asked.
And I'm assuming that contract and services keeps coming up as, you know, sixty-nine hundred percent. Yeah, well, because of the, the Coleman engineer.
In the water fund, absolutely. In the other funds, we're pretty much on top. It's like if a contracted, you know, uh, it goes up, we know exactly what that is. In the water fund, it could be PWA, it could be, uh, you know, uh, Coleman, um, and we, we, it's a, it's a line that we've always had in our budget. It's always been uh, kind of, it's always been there, but we didn't use it all that much. The last two years.
Yeah.
Now it's really getting worked out.
So counselors, are there, are there quick questions I might have been up to public comments because I know people have been hanging in and they're cold and maybe we have some burning questions or a warm stuff.
This is like metaphor, nah.
I think Gabe started out with this one. The water friend continues to leak oil. Many questions inside our mix metaphor.
Yeah, you, you missed one of them. Gabe was talking about septic and said we put the lid on.
Yes, I did. All right, I'll, I'll make it back to counselors for more questions, but let me open the public comments. So if, if anyone has any comments about the bed, Ms. Thompson. We've been very patient. Thank you. And I hope you're, I hope you can still move.
Um, well, thank you, Gabe. I remember last year when I attended it, it was, I love the goal. And just the way you explain everything. And, um, as we know, uh, budget now drives planning and decisions in order to meet our goals. Here in this, yeah. Um, from the presentation and supporting documentation, uh, well, anticipating year-end twenty-twenty-two spending deficit. The water front of at least two hundred thousand and another hundred and sixty thousand or more in twenty-twenty-three, if permanent staffing solution isn't. So, uh, last year when we, the city first contracted with Coleman Engineering, I stated as well, other water customers that this business decision was unsustainable. Uh, the community was shocked at the monthly charges over thirty thousand a month. We were charged like a moment. We're also concerned about water rate increases as a result of bringing on Coleman to run our water plant. And at the time at that city council meeting, um, it was stated that our water rates would increase. Of course, I understand that our water rates are going to increase, even if we didn't have Coleman. I tried to look up those minutes, but the minutes in the website, I just saw. But I remember it was last year. So my one concern I have is that the water rate increases won't be a direct result of hiring Coleman. Um, but, uh, just to continue, uh, that's, I'm sure people have the same concern. So we talk about living in one's, uh, means. We also refer to finances. So which means since we want to spend less or we want to spend water funds that do not exceed the budget. Or put us into debt. Questions I have or and also just maybe some ideas out there. I really don't understand the, um, staffing right now. But if you want to know what the short term and the long-term plans are staffing. So my concern is that we're not in the same situation. Say we hire a T-three person, we have a person aboard. That person leave and then we're in the same situation we are now. Where we were last year. Then we're in trouble again with the workers. Again, it's like the passive building where you're not, you're not dependent on one person in that position. Where if they leave, we're back to where we were before. So we don't want to, I feel like we don't want to get in that situation again. I understand we hadn't had a T-three operator, but we didn't want to be in the same sit- situation again. So maybe we have two or three T-three operators. I'm sure you probably thought about that. That's probably a plan and I just aren't aware of the plan. Um, the other issue was, um, I'm just curious, the approximate amount we paid at Coleman Engineering. Absolutely. Um, and. There's an idea. I don't know if it's possible, but could the state take over our small water system plant? If we can't sustain it or we can't get the staffing, do we have to help them with that? Oh, no. Um, um, here's another idea. Can we get a waiver from the state with the, with the current staff we have right now? Cause I mean, if we could, I don't know.
Yeah, so what are you talking about as far as the lady?
For the T-three operator, what, I just don't understand with the staffing situation. Is it how we get Coleman, because they're not in the picture anymore. We're not paying them.
So why don't we briefly address? Oh, no, no, it's okay. Yeah, I, I just meant we could, uh, take, I was. You know, you can address the staffing and a little more detail to this in the context of the budget, if that's okay. And then it sounds like we're also talking a little bit about certification of the plant, whether it's T-two, T-three. You could, we did talk about that a little bit at lack and that may be getting a little off. But we can see what we can dearly.
Yeah, we aren't a T-three plant, but we're not too far from being a T-two plant. So Coleman is looking at ways where we could possibly become a T-two plant. And then that we wouldn't need to have a T-three operator.
I mean.
Yes.
To your question about a waiver.
Then we could have maybe have two. Two T-two.
Yeah.
With knowing we have, I just don't want this to happen again. I'm sure none of us do. This is really a bad situation.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. And, and we have, uh, uh, in the process, uh, Coleman has, uh, two people that, uh, they're talking to as far as taking their exam for T-two. And once they take their exam for T-two, uh, then maybe could work with the plan and then eventually become a T-three. They're, they're younger and, uh, and, uh, you know, we'll see how their potential is. So it'll just be sort of like a way to see, you know, how, how they can come along. So either way, they're, they're trying to move some, some people in. They, they keep referring to the phrase that they want to work themselves out. Uh, so, but, uh, we had a hiccup unfortunately where we had a T-three that had been working at the plant. And, uh, and then started working full-time since August first. Uh, before January thirtieth, which would have been the end of the six-month probationary period. So middle of January, we had to let him go because he didn't fulfill the expectations. Uh, so cost is always a consideration, but beyond cost, it's always making sure that the water and the quality is there. Uh, I have a comfort level with Coleman Engineering because they have a good reputation in the state. And, uh, the state had apparently stated that, uh, that they might've had to step in if we didn't go ahead and have someone like Coleman.
And I realize they did make a lot of improvements.
Right. Exactly.
It's just the cost was too high.
Exactly. Yeah, it, it, it is.
Obviously.
Right. Yeah, we, we were hoping and they were hoping that they could have pretty much phased out for the most part. So, so we, we had to basically regroup in January. And then we were able to get to, uh, we had the T-two who's currently working. So he was on board before, since September first. Uh, and under us, he started his employee class and then Coleman running the plant that became Coleman employee. And then September first came back as our employee. Uh, so that's the T-two one. And then the T-three one was originally signed up with Coleman. Is from the area. Yeah. When, when they were cool, they operated the plant. And then recently, uh, in January, we reached out to him. He agreed to work with him. And so, uh, so he is the T-three that's currently working. And, um, he also, uh, is currently working with Eureka and Alec and Bay. Uh, and supposedly Eureka is, uh, working on getting another employee. So he won't have to work there those, uh, I think it's just covered one day there. And, and Eureka, so that he can dedicate that extra day to us. Uh, but it's still part-time because he didn't want to. So, so we'll see how that all pans out because we, we need to get a, a T three operator that's a city employee. So that's. And see how that plays into.
Yeah, we have, we have two part time people, a T two and a T three. So we're cover with Coleman as the backstop as a T three. They're not working full time anymore at a thirty five thousand dollar a month run rate. So we expect that run rate was like nineteen thousand. We expect it to get to four to five grand.
Yeah.
And then the idea is to either change the plant rating to T two so that we, you know, don't have to have a T three. Looking at that option and or, you know, as Eli said, we have two people that are applicants that, you know, would be our bench. So these would be new folks who are gonna come in and potentially at least one or two of them to get trained and be longer term in place. So we're looking at like, now how can we have one or two or three people?
Yeah.
On the bench, ready to go. So if, you know, cause people can leave.
Yeah.
That's, um, unfortunately.
Right.
But, um, yeah, so that's, I just wanted to recap because I don't want anybody to. You know, we don't have people managing the plant as we do right now.
Yeah.
And thank you for arranging that so quickly when this person left, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and as far as the T three, T two portion, uh, it, it probably would be a long shot if we end up being classified as a T two.
Yeah.
So, so, so at least we're, we're just gonna keep looking at a T three, pursuing the T two, but not putting our A's in that basket because, uh, it, it would be difficult to get to that stage. Uh, because we're, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it was something, uh, like, uh, possibly mid forties and we have to get underneath forty, being like thirty, like the way they do the rating. So, so we were close, but, but we still had a number of points that we'd have to shave off. And, uh, and, 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 you know, we, we just, we'll try, but, uh, I just don't want that to feel like that's a feasible option, yeah.
What was your other question?
Yeah, so about the, I understand that we're gonna have a water rate increase. I understand that, that. Understand. But, um, are we gonna have the word, the, of that? From Coleman?
No, the, the water. Yeah, yeah, the water rate increase, uh, when they do the analysis, we waited because we ideally would have had it done sooner.
Sure.
Uh, but we waited because we wanted to make sure that things sort of stabilize in some respect. So that we wouldn't take into consideration full cost of Coleman, or rather their contribution be like, uh, Cheryl was saying, even more in, let's say, alcohol market, five thousand, but you know, maybe even four thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, ultimately, I see them as being like, uh, a backup. So that at any point where any resources needed, our people can call them, ask them questions and, and someone is there to make sure things keep running well as they are right now.
I meant, um, for the, uh, water customer.
Oh, yeah, no, as, as far as the water.
Is that gonna be independent of Coleman? We hear.
Well, it, it'll still have probably like in the four to five thousand range per month. Let's, let's just say, which would be like maybe around sixty thousand, you know, fifty or sixty thousand, which would be like for Coleman. Uh, that's what we're just saying that that may be taken into consideration.
Oh.
You know, but, but by the time they do the whole study, it, it, it might end up being only twenty or thirty thousand. It'll still be something of, of at least, uh, a few that, you know, uh, it, it, I don't know what the number would be, whether it's twenty or thirty. But we'll see, we'll, we'll see how they do it all.
Um, okay. I think we need to move on a bit. Other, uh, public comments or questions? Brush ourselves. There is, and this is just from hearing people secondhand opinions and whatnot. But how many people have cycled, how many city employees have cycled through the water plant, like come and gone over the past couple of years? And is that difference, you know, the rate of people cycling through other city jobs? Good question. Eli, do you wanna take that up?
Yeah, uh, so we, so other than Coleman, as far as city employees being at the water plant, uh, we had after Ryan and had left. Uh, so we had, uh, total of one, two, three, four that are city employees. So out of those four, two have left the plant and two are still at it.
Okay, so about a fifty percent.
Right.
Retrition and.
And this is because we're transitioning, we're transitioning, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we, um, also, I think Eli mentioned, you know, we've improved the package, right? The, maybe we didn't talk about this a little bit in lack, apologies, but, um, we, we have improved the salary package and benefits to aid in retention. I think that's, I think that's gonna make a big difference. It's, it's competitive now, so. Uh, but we're keeping an eye on it and it's, it's important to keep, uh, bringing it, uh, to our attention. It's working. Other questions or comments on the budget? Um, and Gabe, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think I covered it. We're all cold, so.
Diane, her, she's like. All right, uh, future, they could save money.
Yeah.
We can save over seventeen dollars.
Anyway.
Out of a seven hundred thousand dollar budget, Eli, you're so positive.
Okay, so we're all on send, future agenda items. Anybody have anything they want to, uh, add? For the future. I'm sure there are already some things on our list, but if there's anything. Okay, um, with that then, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for hanging in.
Thank you.